Ready, ready? Be still. I'd like to call this, uh, Fernley City Council meeting to order November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. If anybody needs hearing devices, please come up to the front and. I'd like to call this, uh, Fernley City Council meeting to order November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. If anybody needs. That's in case anybody didn't hear. Oh, all right. So if anybody needs hearing devices, please come up and see Brendan. She can set you up there. To avoid meeting disruption, please place your cell phones in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded. When addressing the council, please sign in, state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you for understanding this. My item one is a pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilwoman Zobersky to lead us in that.
Pledge allegiance in the eye of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Uh, line item one point two, roll call, count, uh, Ward one, Councilman Hannan is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zobersky is present. Ward three, Councilman Lalas is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present, and Ward five, Councilman Mendoza is present. Line item one point three, public forum, this portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items are not, items not included on this agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand, uh, featured in Zoom. Star nine, if you're participating via phone, public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may at his discretion hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to four P M. The day of the meeting will be provided to city council and added to the record, but will not be read during live meetings. Any public input received after four P M. The day of the meeting will be included in the record, but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time? Please print your name on the sheet that is provided, Ms. Tammy.
I'll do it after. Tammy didn't refer the record. I had to write all this stuff down, so, um. Hey, everyone, yes, it's me again. I'm back to talk about fire hydrant inspections because this, this point is basically my hobby. First, I really do want to thank the mayor and the staff for finally getting the hydrant inspections moving. After more than seven months of me showing up and talking about hydrants, I'm sure you're just as happy as I am to see this thing progressing. Honestly, I was starting to wonder if you all were going to assign me my own honorary hydrant just to keep me quiet. Now, since we are moving forward, I'd love a timeline, nothing too specific. I'm not asking for a minute by minute schedule, just a general, this is when the hydrants will get their checkup. So the rest of us can plan ahead and I can stop sounding like a broken record every month. I also want to thank the engineering department, especially Maria Dalton. They met me out on Chisholm Trail to look at the street markings and I really appreciated that. Not everyone is brave enough to stand in the street with me pointing at asphalt and pretend we're traffic engineers. So thank you both for including me, listening and keeping things moving. And I know Maria is out with an injury. So again, thank you to the mayor and all the staff for the progress we're seeing. And thank you in advance for the timeline I'm really hoping to hear about. Because if you think I've talked about hydrants a lot in the last seven months, well, I can go longer. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, and I just wanted to make a comment to you that the fire chief did. There was another fire hydrant that was inoperable, and the crew went out right away, got it fixed. And I'm here to report to you that every fire hydrant in the city of Fernley is now operable. And Mr. Williams is working on hiring a firm to come out and, and, uh, or, or trying to get some quotes from different entities to come out and, uh, pressure test and operate the valves, make sure they're all really in good working order. But as of right now, the fire hydrants are in working order.
Thank you.
Is there any other public input at this time? Is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Nobody on the phone, right? Okay, we'll now move on to line item one point four, looking for approval of the agenda. Councilman Lal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Looking for a second. Councilman Mendoza. We have a motion by Councilman Lal, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Now move on to line item two, consent agenda, looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilman Torres.
Uh, I had a quick question for legal before, uh, moving forward on that. On, uh, item two point seven, just for clarification, um, approving that it does not, um, bind our commercial and industrial into using only that company, right? They still have the ability to choose the company that they want.
Aaron Mortson, city attorney, that is correct. It is a non-exclusive agreement, and that means anybody else can also compete in that same sphere.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Torres, Councilman Lal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lal, seconded by Councilwoman Zobersky. Please vote. Motion carries five, five zero. We'll now move on to line item three, reports and from, uh, Land County Sheriff's Office. Chief Deputy Mitch Brandingham.
Chief Deputy Mitch Brandingham, Land County Sheriff's Office. Again, evening, council, Mr. Mayor, Deputy State Manager. Thanks for having me this evening. A couple of incidents that I wanted to brief the council on, uh, from around Fernley over the weekend. Uh, on Saturday evening, we had a heck of a night around Fernley. Uh, we had all sorts of stuff going on, but a couple that I wanted to touch base on, um, right about four o'clock in the afternoon, sixteen hundred hours, uh, we had a young man drive a vehicle into the canal, uh, here in town. Uh, no major injuries or anything like that sustained. He was able to self-extricate from the vehicle. Uh, but the vehicle was left there. We weren't able to get it out. We didn't have a wrecker or anything that was capable of pulling it out of the canal at that point in time. Uh, we've been working on it over the last couple of days. We were able to get that vehicle removed today. Uh, the Washington Hacey team came out and helped and, uh, we were able to get a big enough wrecker out to get that vehicle pulled out. So I know there were some concerns, uh, about long-term, uh, vehicles in the canal and things like that, and affecting water quality and some of that kind of stuff, but it is out now. So I think we avoided all those issues. And the other one that I wanted to touch base on, uh, right about that same time on Saturday, we had a vehicle pursuit, uh, here in Fernley. Uh, we had, uh, reports and deputies identified a vehicle that, uh, almost struck some people on the roadway and then exited the roadway, was driving over some sidewalks and through some landscaping and things like that. Uh, they attempted to conduct a traffic stop. Um, the subject fled from us. The deputies were concerned about the, the very aggressive and reckless driving pattern, and that continued if they didn't get a stop conducted. So they pursued that vehicle, uh, out down through Farm District, now towards the railroad tracks. The vehicle went over the railroad tracks. They did, deputies described as like Dukes of Hazzard style, like jumped right over them. Uh, deputies continued to pursue him. He ultimately, uh, crashed the vehicle, uh, just over the tracks. Uh, a foot pursuit ensued, and, uh, as deputies were going through fencing and things like that, one of the deputies, uh, ended up falling down in a, a pretty deep hole. It was about a four and a half foot deep hole and, uh, sustained some pretty substantial injuries during that fall, which ended the, the pursuit of that suspect. Uh, we have continued that investigation. Uh, we believe we have an identification of him, and, uh, we're working to track him down right now. We're looking forward to having him in custody in the next couple of days. Uh, everything else, uh, here at the school in Fernley is going very, very well. Uh, back, uh, at the beginning of the summer, like around May, we had a couple deputies transferred down to, uh, Mason Bay to help with some coverage and stuff down there. Uh, the deputies that they were filling in for are going to be back from the academy, uh, tomorrow. Excuse me, we have three deputies graduating from the post academy over in Carson City, and, uh, all of our deputies will be back here in Fernley, uh, putting us back up to our, our staffing capacity. So, uh, everything's going really well on that end. Uh, we've got great, great remarks back from the academy staff on the, on the deputies over there. And, uh, we're headed off towards, uh, Shop of the Sheriff, which will be December thirteenth, uh, here in Fernley over the Walmart. And then, uh, we also have the, uh, Christmas parade on December sixth. And, uh, we'll be here at City Hall for, uh, Coco with the Cops that evening following the parade. So we're looking forward to seeing people at those events. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
What, what is the staffing count here in Fernley for your deputies?
Uh, we're currently sitting at twenty. Uh, we have, and that includes three supervisors. So we've actually added a sergeant up here. Uh, so we have three sergeants, uh, myself as supervisors working here in Fernley. And then, uh, whatever sixteen deputies on top of that.
All right, thank you, Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief Deputy. I want to thank you and the sheriff and your deputies for your hard work and perseverance. Like I said, e- everything that, that we hear that's happening sheriff-wise is just great news. It's unfortunate, uh, thoughts and prayers and well wishes to the deputy. It was injured, of course, and, uh, just thank you for keeping Fernley safe. The people of Fernley safe. Uh, the hard work and the diligence is really paying off. It's making a huge difference in my ward, I know, citywide, and I just want to thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Yeah, hey, thanks for your report. Um, there's twenty deputies committed to Fernley, but that's over, um, how many shifts?
So right now that's over, uh, four shifts. So they're working twelve hour shifts, uh, two sides of the week. So, uh, day shift in graveyard, unlike the A side, day shift in graveyard on the B side.
So we're averaging about five a shift, it sounds like.
No, we're not seeing five a shift. Um, I mean, in a perfect world, we're seeing five a shift, but that's just not the way that reality really works. Generally, we have, uh, three deputies and a supervisor on, uh, kind of in the area. Sometimes it fluctuates a little bit. Our minimum staffing for Fernley, uh, we never have any less than two on here at any given point in time, um, which understands not enough. Um, and, you know, we're, we're constantly seeking more deputies be sent up this direction. Um, but to use our minimum staffing, it fluctuates up to about five. If, uh, everybody's here and everything is, you know, we don't have any vacations or training or sick leave or, um, you know, transports going on or any of that other stuff that happens during a shift.
Nice. Are you, speaking of transports, do you guys still have the transport deputy coming from Newington, um, during regular working hours or how's that working?
Ye- yes, we do. So, um, most often it's a transport that comes out of the jail facility. Um, most of the time the deputies meet him down in Silver Springs, and that's really, they'll come all the way up. But once somebody's in custody, we're tied to them. So they're sent to the office anyway. Most of the guys have figured out it's faster to go to Silver Springs.
Drop them on.
Meet up with them there and they're back on the road in a, in a smaller amount of time doing that.
Hook them up to the roundabout so that the other deputy could pick them up.
There you go, yeah. So, yeah, but.
Awesome, thank you.
But those transports are happening, so.
Per- perfect, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And the fire department, um, North Island Fire is busy, and that's why we don't have a report tonight. Cause they, uh, they like to give their report at the first meeting of the month, but right now they are out on calls and that, so. Is there anybody from Land County School District here? Seeing nobody. Okay, let's, uh, go on with, uh, staff reports, uh, Acting City Manager, Liddy Altek.
Good evening. I do have a few announcements. Tonight, the city hall will be closed, uh, Thursday and Friday, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. And I want to mention the Rotary will be serving free Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday at the Wigwan from one to three. And there are flyers in the back of the room, um, about this event. They need volunteers. If volunteers want to come, uh, they could arrive at twelve. They also need, uh, about twenty more pies, pumpkin or pecan. They need about twenty more turkey took, uh, um, turkeys cooked. So they have the turkeys, they just need people to cook them. So, um, there, there's, uh, so several ways you can help, but contact information is on the flyer in the back of the room. And I want to mention that this Saturday, there's a microchip clinic put on by our own, uh, animal col- control officer, Randy Gar, and that will be right here at City Hall from nine to two. And that'll be the last one for the year. And then they'll resume the last Saturday of January and every month thereafter, being the last Saturday of every month. And that is a great opportunity to get your, your, um, pet microchipped. You should take it up, take her, take your, take her up on that and get it done. Um, this week we're, uh, doing interviews for maintenance workers for the parks. And also I want to mention that, um, December sixth is our Christmas parade, and things get off, start, started off in the morning with breakfast with the Grinch at the Boys and Girls Club over here at the Community Response and Resource Center, starting at eight A M. And then the parade, which starts at five P M. On Locust Street to Silver Lace Boulevard, ending at City Hall. And if you want more information, you can go to our website or also the Chambers website. After the parade ends, you can meet us here at City Hall for the annual Christmas tree lighting around six, and then Coco with the Cops and Free Pictures with Santa. So don't forget your iPhones or cameras. Think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, with council reports, we'll start with Councilman Hannan, Ward one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Um, I had the pleasure of attending the Fernley twenty-fifth anniversary meeting this morning from eight thirty to ten thirty. Uh, lots of great conversation. We're planning an amazing event for the twenty-fifth anniversary, uh, the incorporation of Fernley. And, uh, there'll also be a Fourth of July event following that, and, uh, some exciting things happening. Lots of collaboration between, uh, the Rotary Chamber, local business, City Fernley, uh, and our other partners. And so we're super happy about that. Uh, last week I was able to attend the N N D A, uh, Future of Rural Nevada, uh, conference. Uh, I had a little bit of time to talk to, uh, Lieutenant Governor Stavros Anthony and, um, represent Fernley. And so I was excited to do that. Lots of good news, just positivity all around, nothing negative, everything positive about, um, Northern Nevada and, uh, and Fernley. And Fernley was, uh, generally the topic of discussion the entire meeting, so we're excited for that. Um, I had a opportunity to have an interview today with Rolling Stone Magazine about Fernley and, uh, the Black Rock Desert. And so hopefully they'll publish that and, uh, I'll follow up with that. So that was exciting. Fernley's on the map. Um, we're getting a lot of, uh, questions about Fernley, what we're doing here, what we're about, and so we're excited about that. And I want to sort of piggyback on, uh, our acting city manager. Uh, this weekend is the microchip event, uh, animal control. I believe it's, is it fifteen dollars? Fifteen dollars, uh, to get your animal microchipped, that's cats or dogs. And you can also bring in a ten pound bag of dog food or cat food, uh, I believe, and, uh, that, that fee is waived. So, um, she had a, I think she had a, uh, like a concept to do fifty in the first three months, and she's accomplished that. And so we're excited. Lots of loose animals in Fernley. It's one of our top ten complaints, uh, all the animals roaming around with no, uh, collars or homes. And so get your animals microchipped so they can be returned safely so they don't end up at the shelter. That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman Zobersky.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilman Lal.
I also have nothing.
Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the deadline for the F C T A grant applications is November thirtieth. All applications must be, must be submitted online by five P M. Sunday, November thirtieth. Um, the F C T, F C T A board, we're reviewing the grant applications and making grant selections during the December eighth, F C T A board meeting, which starts here at Council Chambers at six P M. Uh, detailed information is posted at the Fernley website, or you may contact April Homme at seven seven five seven eight four nine eight five eight. And then, uh, just a quick update on special session. I think most people are probably following that. There's a lot going on at the legislative building. Um, my understanding, it's basically like trying to herd feral cats. Some of the bills are okay. Um, some of the bills are absolute disasters, so it's going to be very interesting to see what comes out of this. Um, I know there's been a lot of discussions on the film bill. Um, I don't know how that's going to turn out. The downside of the film bill that affects municipalities and counties is the abatement that the state is going to give to the film industry is via C tax. So luckily we don't get much C tax. We learned to, um, operate without it, but, um, everybody from big cities, the big five, all the way down to very small cities and, um, are less than, um, than rich counties are really going to be affected by this, by, uh, a lot of the C tax. Some of these counties with little to no income rely on that C tax to stay alive, and that, this is going to really, I think it's really going to hurt us. So not a big fan of the, of the giving abatements to billionaires, but, um, I'm not at session. Um, but just a little update on some of that. A lot of the stuff on the crime bill, um, has passed as well. Most of that is pretty positive, and, um, the other bill, which I believe is ten, um, will help address some of the housing issues. Um, so some of the states, um, not just in the West Coast, but across the country, have these major corporations coming in and they're buying five and ten thousand homes. Um, well, when a corporation owns the homes and the property, they set the price and they can set what the interest rate is going to be, um, at, at the minimum. This allows this bill that Nevada is going to have, um, I believe it's, it's going to pass, is it puts a limit on that. Right now, the limit is you can come in as an individual or as a corporation, and you can purchase a thousand homes, um, which kind of keeps it under control. Um, we're not having some major companies decide whether or not our young people are going to be able to, um, be homeowners in this state. So something else to keep an eye on, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that update. Councilman Mendoza.
Happy Thanksgiving, if I don't see you guys. Um, and I want to thank, uh, Public Works Director Barry for facilitating a meeting, uh, last week in regards to all our sporting leagues. It was a pretty productive meeting, uh, appeared that everybody wanted the same, same thing for our children. And, uh, he presented a, an idea of potentially, you know, establishing a sporting complex within the city that will accommodate all the sports and be big enough, not only for what we got going on now, but for the future. Um, so right now it's just a dream, and we're all dreaming together at that meeting and, uh, looking forward to see what that comes out to be. And, um, I'll continue to be there to support that. So thank you, Barry.
All right, thank you. What I'd like to speak on right now is the city manager, give an update on the city manager, uh, process. We interviewed six candidates here this, uh, this week. We will be bringing four forward to council. Council should be expecting a packet from CPS H R, uh, by the end of this week. And I'm trying to set up meetings with each council person individually to go over, uh, these candidates and just, uh, speak a little bit about the, the process. So I look forward to meeting with the, each one of these council members individually on, on that subject. Also, this, this week, uh, had the opportunity to, two or three fishing ponds with, uh, Ms. Altek and, let's see, and Mr. Williams and Michelle Rambo. And it was, um, it was quite, quite interesting. The first, uh, pond we visited was in Verdi, and while we were there, the, the park ranger showed up. So we got to ask him a lot of questions. Not really typical of what I was thinking that a fishing pond would look like. But when we moved down to Carson City and looked at their park, it was very well laid out, handicap accessible and everything. But I was most impressed with the one down in Gardinerville that, uh, was really set up with what I imagine with the park, a playing field. It, it just had so much for all kinds of kids to do at this park. And what was really interesting and kind of exciting for me was there were two young boys there fishing while we were, while we were there. This one boy, um, he caught a fish, I don't know, a trout, rainbow trout, about twelve inches long. And he was so excited, he wanted me to take his picture with this fish. And, uh, it was only twelve inches long. It's the biggest fish he's ever caught, but just seeing the, seeing the excitement on his face catching that fish was, was pretty exciting. Also, uh, I did report already on the fire hydrants, uh, to Tammy as far as all the, all the fire hydrants in the city of Fernley are operable. So, so that's a good thing. So that's basically all I have at this time. Now, oh, you know what? I need to back up here, if, if I may. I would like to go back to, um, consent agenda. And if, um, Ms. Brenda would read our business licenses, I'm sorry, I forgot to have you read those, if you would please.
Yes, sir. S I Legacy Floor Finishing, Reno, Nevada, flooring concrete contractor. Viking Automatic Splinter Company, High Sierra Fire Protection, Reno, Nevada, Fire Sprinklers System Contractor. A G R Cleaning Solutions LLC, Fallon, Nevada, Commercial, Industrial and Residential Cleaning Services. Panda Express, Fernley, Nevada, Chinese Fast Food Restaurant. Louis Basque, Fernley, Nevada, Uber Service. Washo Painting Company LLC, Reno, Nevada, Painting Contractor. Pueblo Electrical Service Inc., Las Vegas, Nevada, Electrical Contractor. C C N R R Inc., Chromehead Construction and Roofing, Reno, Nevada, Construction Roofing Contractor. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Now we will move on to line item four, proclamations by the mayor from the office of the mayor, city of Fernley, Nevada, proclamation, whereas the government of Fernley, Nevada celebrates our small, our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas small businesses play a vital role in maintaining the unique character of our neighborhoods fostering innovation and creating jobs for our residents. And whereas small businesses, excuse me, and the restaurant and retail industries significantly, significantly contribute to the vibrance of our local economy, offering diverse culinary experiences and unique shopping opportunities to draw visitors. And where a Small Business Saturday was founded in twenty-ten and encouraged people across the country to support small independently owned local businesses during the busiest shopping period of the year. And whereas since the tradition started, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed this Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday. And whereas Small Business Saturday provides us with a wonderful opportunity to support our familiar favorite small businesses and find new favorites when we shop small, shop local. Now therefore, I, Nellie McIntyre, Mayor of City of Fernley, Nevada, along with the City Fernley Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five as Small Business Saturday in the, in Fernley, the city of Fernley, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and to shop throughout the year. And therefore, I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Fernley, Nevada to be affixed this nineteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five. And here to, uh, accept this proclamation, um, from McHoppers is Mike Endoti. Just so you know, McHoppers is expanding to, uh, to create a family atmosphere out there for the whole family. So we're pretty excited about seeing that come in. So thank you very much for. So we're pretty excited about seeing that come in. So thank you very much for for the opportunity. So now we'll move on to line item five presentations, 5.1. Presentation of discussion regarding the city's quarterly financial report. Mr. Carson's will present that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members, Deputy City Attorney Altec, Robert Carson, City Treasurer for the record. So tonight we're going to go through the first three months where we're at financially. Right now it's a little hard, you know, we're still at the beginning of the year, so it's really hard to see any trends. Revenue is coming a little slower at the beginning, expenses haven't really kicked up from the things that we had budgeted for the current year. So just benchmark where we're going. So the first slide is our cash and investments. You can see the box on the left with the bar chart shows our total fiscal year 24 versus 25 and current year through fiscal 26. Our cash balances have remained really steady, which is a good sign. Excuse me. And then the pie chart on the right, that one shows a breakdown by our major funds. So the general fund is at almost 19 million. The T L T fund has about a million and a half, Water Enterprise Fund has 53 million, and the Sewer Enterprise Fund has 32 and a half. Just so you know, I'm planning on going through this fairly quickly. So if you have any questions, just holler at me and I'll be happy to answer those. So we're going to start off with our general fund as always. As you can see, this is the revenues, property taxes, they're coming in right around 30% of budget. Property tax taxes fluctuate just because the payment schedule, the big amounts don't normally come in until December. And then through there every quarter. So most of the months, the first three months, you don't get a whole bunch licenses and permits, those are excuse me, relatively low. We don't have any of the franchise fees posted back, so that number in reality is a little higher than what it looks like in there. Other than that, everything else is going good. Our interest earnings are still producing really well. We're already at $150,000 in interest earnings this year for just a quarter. And we don't expect those to slow down based on our very conservative investment policy that we have. So year to date, we're at $2.8 million in revenue, less E R T C reimbursables and $3 million overall. So for the general fund, these are our category expenditures that we have. As you can see, they fluctuate from 14% to about 19%, just depending on where they're at. Through a quarter of the year, I think that's in a really good spot. They will start to tick up as we start to dig into some of the things that some of the more major things that we had budgeted for the year. All the master plan updates and the other plans that we had going through there. I do want to note the beginning fund balance on there for actuals at the 15, 3, 6, 3. That's the number that's budgeted. We don't actually have an official beginning fund balance because last year isn't closed just yet. You'll see all that next year. So as we close those out and everything gets finalized, your next quarterly report, that number will be changed probably closer to 18 million. This is a departmental breakdown in the general fund. As you can see, there are some that are looking a little higher, the city manager, I T, just a little more elevated. They have a lot of one time expenditures that happen at the beginning of the year, so we expect it to slow down a little bit. But all in all, everybody's right on budget and we'll keep an eye on it as we go forward. This is a breakdown of the revenues just in graphic form. As you can see, 64% that we have right now is taxes, licenses and permits comes in second right at 20%. So those will keep fluctuating as revenues keep coming in more and more. The expenditures by source, outside services is 34, salaries and benefits are right at 40%. So those are fairly even and pretty consistent with how we've run in the past. Just a graphic of where we're at financially, revenues versus expenditures. So we do have the $4 million deficit budgeted for the year. And all that was one time expenses that were approved during the budget year or during the budget discussion, excuse me. And currently we're just slightly, you know, in the negative by, I think, $150,000. So nothing to be alarmed about. Like I said, it's still really early in the year and we're still trending in the right direction for everything. And then another representation with the RTC funds included, most of those programs won't go through until later in the year. So those numbers will tick up because we do have two programs scheduled to go forward. We have the Cedar Street Reconstruction in the industrial park area. So we expect those expenses to be revenues and expenses both to be up there higher with the RTC. So the Water Enterprise Fund, again, same story, it's still early in the year. The operating revenue is coming in higher, which is good to see. Non operating revenue, most of that again is investment income and that's coming in really well, really strong. Capital contributions, those won't come through until later in the year, most of them. So no concerns there, but we do have $4 million in revenue versus the $2.3 million in expenses for the year. Non operating expenses, that's all interest expense on the debt that we have outstanding. So that will come in right on budget. Operating expenses, those are salaries, benefits. The one thing that's not there, like it's noted up there is capital asset depreciation, that's not done until the end of the year, so. And then, so those are broken out between water distribution and water treatment plants. Again, everything looks just fine right now. Graphic representation where we at, we have a slight surplus budgeted. I expect it's going to come in higher, but we'll keep an eye on it and have better numbers for you, probably easier to do trends after six months. And then this is a new slide. These are the capital expenditures that were or capital expenses, excuse me, that were budgeted for during or for the fiscal year. So you can see the equipment at the top, we budgeted for four different vehicles for the Water Enterprise Fund. And those have been purchases or purchased. There's additional equipment that they're still working on. The other capital projects, I put the C I P estimate in there, that's not the budget, that's just what we had approved. As you can see, there's only a couple that have anything posted to them. As we get through and get the design and the contracts awarded, those will start going up. So you'll see this update every quarter as we go through it.
Question. Can you see my light? You looked right at me like you knew I had a question.
I was looking that way and then you just caught my eye, so.
Psychic. On the water capital expenses, when we have something like the Wedge Lane repair that was on consent agenda tonight, like an emergency repair or something, are you going to include that on the next quarterly financials for what we've? Because it's not, I mean, and I know that it's not nearly as much as a lot of these projects, but will we see it on? It's kind of an emergency capital project, I guess?
If you want to see those types of things, I can put that in there. They don't technically qualify as a capital expense. I know it seems more expensive, but in the grand scheme of the overall infrastructure, it's just an emergency repair. So it doesn't fall in this category, but I can definitely highlight those if you'd like to see them.
No, that's okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
So on to the sewer fund, it's the same story as the water fund and the general fund. Operating revenues are coming in strong, non operating revenues again are investment income. So we have $2.1 million in revenue through September 30th. And then total expenses of $725,000. So again, nothing to worry about, everything's looking great so far. And then a visual representation. And then the same slide that you saw on the water capital expenses, I'll do with the sewer capital expenses. They did a wastewater pickup and then the capital projects. Again, we have two of those projects that were approved that actually have expenditures so far this year. And as we go forward, it'll just keep updating, so. So I know that was quick, there's not just a whole lot to get excited about because it's so early in the year, but I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Councilwoman Zaburski.
Hopefully this is not a silly question. On our revenue sources of percent of total revenue, that chart that you have, the sale of assets, what 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 assets do we have that we're selling?
Oh, so that'll be old vehicles, old equipment that we send to auction. It's outlived its useful life, it's not worth repairing, so we'll send it to auction and then we get all the proceeds from that.
Okay, so just mainly vehicles?
Mainly vehicles and equipment, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Henan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good job, Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
Great news again, just more good news. It's the second year in a row we're on budget, actually we're under budget, and that's great, in the last 12 years. So we're super excited about that and you had a lot to do with that. So just want to thank you for your hard work, thank you for the update and let's keep the good news coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to accept this presentation or just move on? Okay, we'll move on to 5.2 presentation by Maurice Page, Executive Director of Nevada Housing Coalition on new legislate legislation regarding housing and state of housing for rural in rural Nevada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm the council, Acting City Manager. We had some meetings with Maurice Page recently. And he was gracious enough to come and speak to our planning commission last week and we invited him to come speak to you guys tonight. And he's going to give us a overview of housing needs in our area and the state. And then some of the legislation that was passed in the last legislative session that may pertain to us. So I will pass it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Acting City Manager. Thank you for having me again this evening to come and present to you. For the record, my name is Maurice Page, P A G E, and I am the Executive Director for the Nevada Housing Coalition. Just as an overview, for the Nevada Housing Coalition, excuse me, I've been talking all day. We have been in existence for the last seven years. The mission is to drive, to promote, to develop and to preserve affordable housing for all Nevadans throughout the state. And our three pillars are built around advocacy, collaboration and education. Over the last seven years, we have been able to advocate in the state for 750 million that has went towards affordable housing growth throughout the state. Primarily of those funds came through the ARPA funds, which was $500 million, I'm sure that you are more than aware of. We also advocated and worked with Clark County to receive their their housing funds, which was over 200 million. And then most recently with this past legislative session, working with Governor Lombardo and his team, I'm advising them on their Nevada attainable housing account, which we will get into a little bit later. So before I get into the nuts and bolts of this presentation, I'm going to come with a little bit of a barrier of bad news of where we at as a state. We'll shine a little bit of light on some of the successes later in the presentation. But right now I'd like to start with just where we at. And right now, overall as a state, we're not doing very good. Nevada is consistently at the bottom in federal funding per capita, roughly at about $800 per less than the national average, which impacts our infrastructure, housing and community programs. And for a community like Fernley, this majorly impacts where you can grow and how the infrastructure of how you would like to build out. Because of your population growing, it also it affects where the money is going to go to. As you can see with the rankings, this was taken, and this was a collaboration between us and Nevada Grant Lab. These rankings were taken in 2022. We are looking to see where the numbers are at over the next year. So I will be coming back hopefully in the future to address this and let you know where we stand. But as you can see, we rank in the bottom five or in the bottom 10 of some of our major industries across the country. So primarily, if you're looking at agriculture, education, energy, environment, social security, Medicaid, transportation, we do not fare very well nationally. So when we talk about affordable housing and we jump into that, and again, I know you know the nuances of it, but for those in the room or if there's people listening, I'd like to just kind of give an overview of what affordable housing is considered. And basically, when we talk about affordable housing, it's it simply means that a household pays no more than 30% of their income towards housing. And this applies towards seniors, veterans, young workers, families, veterans and public sector employees. It does not mean that this is low quality housing, high density or government owned housing. So usually when you hear about affordable housing, the fears do come from property values, it brings in crime. We also have to deal with outdated zoning and there's also a lack of information. But I can tell you that a research that was done out of Colorado last year, and as you see the state, that it researched spanning the last two decades shows that no negative impact on affordable housing on surrounding property values in many cases, such as new developments lead to slight and leads to slight increases in nearby home values. And what I can say is although we are having a housing crunch, part of the reason is due to corporate entities. As Councilmember Torres mentioned earlier, but also because we have had an influx of affordable housing. And because of these new multifamily units, they have been able to also help increase a lot of our neighborhood housing and our single family home values. NIMBYism, not in my backyard. And so research shows that affordable housing does not decrease property values, as I just stated, it's well managed, well designed and often stabilizes or even improves neighborhoods. And the key is thoughtful planning and strong partnerships. And again, knowing and having my meetings with the mayor, with the planning commission, there is concerns again against infrastructure, against water. Again, will this bring in the wrong population? When you look at the overall goal of affordable housing and whether you want to call it affordable, whether you want to call it attainable, whether you want to call it support services, the idea is that we are helping our essential workers and individuals who are making a minimal income to be able to not have to be struggling to pay their bills on an everyday basis. And so when folks are against affordable housing, it's really truly because of the lack of education around it. So the needs for affordable housing. So again, we're going from a state perspective. What this graph shows, and this was created by the National Low Income Coalition, they come out with yearly numbers on where each state is on from an affordable housing perspective. What you can see is that in the state of Nevada, 93,574 renters renter households are extremely low income. The average income is roughly at 30,000 and we are short 77,000, almost 78,000 units overall as a state. When you apply that to rural and northern Nevada, that number is actually roughly in between 16 and 17,000 units. That is generally needed for individuals to live stably and comfortably. The average income statewide is roughly at about 65,000. And overall, we see that 86% of renters are extremely are 40, 86% of extremely low income renter households are severely cost burdened. One of the other issues that we want to strongly bring up is the fact that the HUD's Continuum of Care Notice of Funding Opportunity just released was last week. And what we found out was that monies that's going towards permanent supportive housing, these are programs where they're providing rental assistance and support mechanisms for our seniors, for our young workers, for our veterans, those monies will be reduced. And so I just earlier today, Washo sent out a report showing that they will lose overall 1.9 million dollars of their funding, which will relate to about 90 households returning to homelessness over the course of the next 12 to 18 months. So let's talk about Fernley and overall, this graph in front of you shows just the the income brackets, the fair market rent versus wages overall. And so in the blue, you find that this is the cost of a one bedroom. And as you can see, it goes from a studio all the way up to a four bedroom. You'll see that a studio in a one bedroom, the average income that a person needs to make is roughly at about 39,000. You can see that folks on average in the construction, retail and roughly manufacturing can somewhat afford housing in in regards to purchasing or renting, I should say, renting a studio or one bedroom. Once it starts trickling up to a two to four bedroom, it becomes out of their price range. And this is where you have to double up, where friends and family have to move in together to be able to cover their bills and their expenses on a month to month basis. From Lyon County, and again, this is where the demographics are all coming from, you'll see that the values in the in the housing have extremely gone up over the last couple of years. We can see that, and then again, this data source is the 2020 census, 21, 22, from American Community Surveys. And they give us an overall average of where And they give us an overall average of where we was at from 2016 all the way to 2024. You can also see that construction and vacancy rates have been on the rise simply because of the lack of wages not increasing. And property values, home values, and of course rental prices have gone up. So with that being said, let's jump into some good news, right? Let's talk a little bit about policy wins for affordable housing. Again, for the Nevada Housing Coalition, we really focus on advocacy and pushing data to our state legislative leaders. So they can make the most informed and timely decisions moving forward. And so again, we understand and what we're trying to preach to them at the end of the day, that affordable housing is not a threat. It is an investment into the community because it stabilizes your economy and it often over usually brings more value to your overall neighborhoods. So let's give a quick, brief overview of where we was at in the 2025 legislative session. Overall, 1,200 bills, bill draft requests was brought to was initiated. 63 housing bills represented 5% of these bills introduced. So let's take a timeout right there and let's let's really talk about that that number right there, 63 housing bills. Do you realize in 2015, we only had three housing bills? In 2017's session, we only had five. In 2017, we only had, I'm sorry, in 2019, we only had nine housing bills. And that was the introduction at that point in time of the state tax credits to be able to develop housing. So in between 2015 and now and today, we have been able to advocate and push housing. And put that at the forefront of a lot of our legislators' minds, and it has truly become a bipartisan issue. And I am proud to say that 40% of those 63 bills was able to get passed into law. And that is super exciting for our state and for your community overall. 518 bills were vetoed, were signed into law overall, and 87 bills were vetoed. I only bring that 87 number to light again, because again, as a state, we looked at that and we said, that is awful. We should not be vetoing that amount of bills. But when we look at that number nationally, we're actually in the middle of the pack. And we also have to realize with our population growth, it is going to become, it becomes more and more of more legislators coming to the building. We have a bigger population, so there's more ideas, there's more solutions being presented. Sometimes they are bad bills, sometimes they are introduced too late. But again, that number is not a bad number. Out of 1,200 bills, to be able to have 518 bills signed into law and have only 87 bills ultimately vetoed, we are moving in the right direction. So let's talk about some of the successes again. As you can see on the graph, nine bills were brought into law. There was affordable housing development and financing. Two laws were signed, they're factored into tenant rights landlord tenant law. Five bills among supportive housing and homelessness. One bill for rental assistance eviction diversion. Three bills that were passed around with manufacturing and mobile home parks. Three bills for tenant anti discrimination and fair housing. We had three bills passed under the local government in zoning and land use. One for property tax and abatements, and then five of our bills were ultimately vetoed. So when you look at the overall successes, and again, we could go through all 26, but again, I only want to highlight just a few, just you know, for the interest of time. These particular bills are really impactful for our state overall and for our communities. Number one, Assembly Bill 366, the Nevada Supportive Housing Development Fund. This bill was actually brought in 2023. It was a one-time appropriation for 32.2 million dollars. This will provide the necessary wraparound services again for our essential workers, seniors, veterans, young workers. Who are in need of behavioral health, substance abuse and other services to enable them to maintain housing. We brought this bill back this year and with the assistance of and advocacy of Assembly Member Danielle Monroe Moreno. We was able to create a sustainable and permanent funding source that will come out of our general fund going forward. And so for 2025, they are allocating 21 million dollars from the State General Fund to support this ongoing project. I would also like to say that this money, that 32.2 million dollars, we have already sent out the majority of that money. And majority of that money actually affected the northern and rural community of Nevada. We had RFPs that went out earlier this year. We received roughly about 16 applications and out of those 16 applications, 12 of those were from northern and rural Nevada. And which they were all funded. And so this is exciting news because again, we see that the population is growing. There's there's a need for more assistance for individuals being able to help them maintain their housing. And so these dollars will help with that. Assembly Bill 62, the transferable tax credits for affordable housing. Backstory on this one, again, this bill was introduced and was brought forward in 2019. This allowed us to be able to build affordable housing developments throughout the state. To the tune of roughly about five to 800 units over the years. When we had the influx of ARPA money to 500 million, that money is going to produce an additional, that money helped us produce an additional 3,200 units overall. So when we look at the state and we and when we look at our affordable housing inventory. Right now, as of July of this year, the Nevada Housing Division has reported that we have 36,000 units. With the influx on the production of the new units through the ARPA funds, of course, we will increase that number. However, this bill in particular wasn't mixed back because we was able to get the technical language moved forward. However, when we went for the extension of this for the state tax credits, we were denied. And the reason behind that was due to the film tax. I'm going to be very honest and upfront. Because of the abatements and of the state of the tax credits that was required and it was being asked to be able to move forward with the tax state with the film tax credit bill. The legislators in the building said no one was going to get it because it was just a bill and they knew where it would take away from. So unfortunately, again, although we were able to get the technical language and we can move development even faster because this will expedite permits and infrastructure processes throughout our jurisdictions. By the end of 2027, development will come to a crawl if we are not introduced or have not expanded our state tax credits. So what does that mean? We as a state, we get roughly about 10 million dollars and that serves as a gap fund for our small to midsize developers to be able to, you know, move their projects along. Right now, it takes on average roughly about five years to complete an affordable housing project. It is very different and unique from general contractors doing market rate housing. Because it involves a layer of different funding sources that has to come in. And the state has been able to provide those gap finances to be able to close these deals and be able to move them forward. We only have enough money right now or tax credits right now to move us through 27. So in 27, if we don't, if we have to go back and if we're not given that extension of roughly about 10 million. And we were asking for 10 million at about for over six years, so 60 million altogether. If we're not able to get any money to move forward, we will have to find other alternatives and other tools to be able to continue to develop. So again, a win on the sense that we can move development right now over the next 18 months. But on the flip side, if we don't get any extension with the state tax credits, we will be at a shortfall of housing moving forward. And as you saw earlier, for extreme low income individuals, we are short 78,000 units. And that number is only rising because even when you bring in the need for market rate housing or the missing middle housing. We're at a deficit as a state at over 140,000 units. Okay? Next bill, 475, eviction diversion. So this one again was a combination of rental assistance and eviction diversion. This will allow us to keep folks, especially our seniors and our veterans in homes who are extreme low income. Again, in the rural community will receive 750,000 over the next, well, over the next biennium. City of Reno will get the sum of 5.2 million and Clark County will get the sum of 15 million. Now on average, that is only, you know, they won't, Clark County will only get 7 million per year. Reno will only get roughly about two and a half million. And rural Nevada will also only get roughly about 375 to 400,000 over the course of per year until we meet next time. The goal is to be able to increase this funding because again, with our population rising, we are expected to bring in roughly about 800,000 folks over the next 10 years as a state and to which we will be closer to the 4 million mark. We will need to introduce new funding metrics to be to keep people, not only keep them housed, but get them into housing. And so we would look to expand that as well in the 27 session. Lastly, Assembly Bill 540, the Nevada Housing Attainable Housing Act. This was a huge monumental bill and I give kudos to Governor Lombardo, his whole housing team, the housing task force. For bringing this together and bringing this forward. This will attack and help bring homeownership to life for those individuals who are at the the middle ground of bringing in their of making money in the state. And so the goal of this bill is to provide 133 million towards development, land, land purchasing and also down payment assistance. And so hopefully if this works out, we'll be able to go back and expand this more in the 27 session. But the the objective of this bill is to be able to introduce five to 7,000 Nevadans to homeownership. And be able to start their quest on creating generational wealth for themselves and their families. So again, this will help out. The pre-app for the 540 has already went out. It's already been closed. The I'm happy to report there was over 90 applications. So that was submitted. They there will be a small contingency group of individuals that will be selected that will move on to the final applications. And then awards will be recognized by the end of December and hopefully development will start in sometime in January, February. And the Housing Division will then open up a second round for other developers to be able to get intertwined with this. So not only will, bless you, and not only will this help our small to midsize developers throughout the state, but this will also benefit some of our larger developers. And the goal around this again is to build, you know, smaller homes and the town, townhouse cottage style duplex, triplex condo range. With a starting price somewhere in the low to mid 300s. So again, knowing that our prices are roughly at about 480,000 as a state. This will dramatically reduce and give opportunity for folks to to actually go out and pursue homeownership. Particularly our young workers, our essential workers, the ones that are really of need of creating other extreme, other streams of income for themselves and their families. So with that, that is my presentation. Again, I do not like, I would like to, would like to let you know that this will not be the last time that you see me. I have been ahead of the and overseeing the Nevada Housing Coalition for the last two years. And it has been my goal to get out into all of the jurisdictions and counties in the state and let them know what the work of the coalition is doing. And also partner with you to figure out where what the next stop, next stop is or next steps are when it comes to housing policy. Right now, as a coalition, we represent and have over 350 members representing 200 organizations. So everyone from tenant organizations to Nevada Power, Southwest Gas, Realtors and everything in between. And so we use that expertise to help shape and model our policy process. And what I can tell you right now on the docket for us for 2027 is to look at production, look at preservation, look at housing stability. And as well as look at other revenue sources that we could bring into the state to be able to help continue to develop more housing. So with that being said, I will turn it over for any questions or comments. And again, I thank you for this time this evening.
Councilman Well.
Great presentation, Maurice. Thank you.
Absolutely.
What do you need from the city of Fernley?
I need to know what your concerns are, what your worries are. You know, we we know that your growth is creeping up there over the last couple of years. I believe you've seen roughly about 2.1% population growth. Over the next 10 years, you're probably looking at about 10,000 more folks moving into the state. Because they're matriculating from Washoe, Reno, because they're being priced out. And so they're looking at other jurisdictions to live in. So for us as a coalition, we need to know what are your concerns? Talking to the planning commission last week, and I'll just brief you on that. Their concerns was built around water, infrastructure. And then honestly, it was like, hey, do we really want to see our more housing come into our county? And so I want to know from a city, from your perspective as a city councilman, what do you want to like to see done? And then this way from there, we can figure out how we can achieve those goals.
Is there any other comments or questions? Councilman Hannah and then Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Solid, powerful. One thing that I'm sort of happy and overjoyed about is the what I consider the affordability of the region. And Fernley really, we really still have that. We're kind of hanging on to that. I think we're slowly losing it bit by bit. But when you look at Reno and you look at Carson City, some of these other counties, Douglas County, when you go down to Minnan and Gardenville. Housing is just, just let's just use Gardenville as example, beautiful area. But but to buy a house there, it's three times what it is in Fernley, one and a half times what it is in Reno. And so when I talk to my constituents and they're telling me about their kids, mostly the conversation that we have is the concern for their kids who are just starting out working. They're out of high school or they've gone to a through a program like a a blue collar program like plumbing or electrician. And they're trying to get established. It's it's still hard to buy a house here for 300, 350, 400,000. And so Fremont Street Apartments, we had some apartments over here and we have some down at River Ranch Incorporated. Internet, water, sewer, garbage incorporated. And that's given some reprieve to folks who, and there are people that are retired, there are veterans there. And that's I think positive. I'm looking forward to to some better programs for folks like our veterans. We had some opportunities that didn't work out for veteran housing. We're hoping that that comes back with a better proposal. My my question to you is, right now, we have 4,000 housing units that are approved in Fernley. And those projects are stagnant. And when I talk to the developers and the owners of those properties and development companies, the issue is the cost per square foot. Because the region as a whole requires quite a high salary. Some of the economic development meetings we went to last year, I should say, two years ago, had the median salary at like 74,000. The year after that, it went up a little more. Now I think it's back down in the 70s. That's that's huge compared to what it was in 2026, 2010, 2011, you know, it's like it was half of that. So we're we're struggling and I would just love to know how we solve this crisis where we have the housing units or they're ready to go, they're approved. They're build ready, but people aren't building them. And and we want to provide those housing to folks and their kids and their families. But I don't know how to get over that hump.
Yeah, so I think it's a twofold. I think, and you touched on it a little bit on with looking at the economic development component of it. One of my, when I first started with the coalition, it was, it's been imperative that I try to get the gaming, the mining and other industries involved, but also we have to look at how we can increase wages as well. You know, right now, if you look at it, look at us regionally, we're the lowest. And when you look at California, Utah, Arizona, and so folks are matriculating here because they're looking at it as an opportunity to start over. They can take their investments from those states and come here and invest here and be able to build up. And that's of course contributed to the growth, but what we have also seen is that housing costs have gone up 50, 60% over the last few years. And income wages have only gone up two, two and a half percent roughly. And so when you see that, you're seeing that we're not, we're just not catching up. And so we have to bring in these organizations and major entities, the Teslas and the lithium industries. And they, we need to make them make a concrete effort to help pay folks the appropriate wages so that this way they can afford housing. You're right, even at 300,000, that's still expensive, especially to our young workers or even to like our baby boomers who are starting to retire. And their their incomes are starting to become slashed and maybe they want to even downsize. They want to be able to invest their money, not have to put if they sell their home for 500 and still have to turn around and put 300,000. That's still too much for them because they're still living on a monthly and set salary. There's no way for growth for them. So again, I think we have to look at it from its totality. We have to look at it from an economic development standpoint. From a developers, we have to give them the right tools so that this way they're able to build. And if we're in right now, we don't have all of the tools necessary. Again, we've made strides. There's conversation now, people, this is at the top of their minds. The one thing that we really don't want to do is we don't want to force our Nevadans to have to move out of the state. And some folks are starting to say, hey, I can't make the wages here. And even though I was born and raised here, I got to go somewhere else to be able to, you know, be able to live sufficiently. And that's the thing that we don't want. We don't want other strangers coming into this town and having to recreate a culture, right? And and so I think, you know, And, and so I think, you know, those are the components that we have to do moving forward to be able to overcome these obstacles. And, and then on top of that, it is infrastructure. We have to be able to, you know, we can build as many houses as we want, but again, if, if you don't have the infrastructure, it's not going to make any sense.
Seems like infrastructure never ends. We just, we're always chasing our tail there. One of the things that the folks tell me is it's not that, that, that the housing prices in Ferley have gone up that much. It's that life is just costs a lot more, fuel, insurance, everything, food, clothing. And so that's sucking up a big portion of, of their, their, their take-home money. So thank you for your presentation. Have a terrific night.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Torres?
Hey Maurice, thanks for coming in and giving the presentation. I'm sure as we prep next year for the twenty-seventh session, we'll probably be meeting quite a bit. So I look forward to it. You guys have made a lot of strives, Nevada Roll Housing as well. You know, everybody's, we know what the goal is. It's just going to take a long ways to get there, but there has been a lot of progress made. And I think probably the twenty-five session is one of the best sessions as far as housing went. So we'll just keep, we'll keep plugging away. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation, especially on the bills.
Definitely. Looking forward to coming back.
Thank you. Councilman Zabrowski?
I really appreciate your presentation. I like, I like that there is a definition behind affordable housing because I feel like every, I mean, really every developer we see is this is affordable housing and then they're five, six hundred thousand dollar houses. I think that probably the biggest thing that we have a problem with out here is, is very much our rural agriculture. I mean, started as, as very much farming community. And so we're, we're definitely still feeling the growing pains of, you know, budding six thousand square foot lots up next to, you know, farmland that, that irrigates or has livestock or things like that because we only have so much town to build in. And we still do have large parcels that, that are based off of, you know, more of an agriculture lifestyle. And so I think that's probably one of the biggest issues that we run into and not as much as crime rates or things like. I know that when people hear affordable housing, people think, you know, HUD housing or low income. But I think that when we have apartments come in here too, people are, oh, we need those. We need those for, you know, the workers out at USA Parkway and we need those. But I think the one-bedroom apartments that we have are, the rent starts at like fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars. And so there's, there's no like, you know, small family that's coming in and being able to even afford the apartments that we have here. And for somebody that's been paying a mortgage for a long time, fifteen hundred dollars rent for an apartment is like, whoa. You should be, you should be paying for your own house, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that, I think as a community, that's, that's probably, obviously, obviously, infrastructure. Obviously, you know, our roadways, especially because a lot of our main roadways are, are in dots roadways. So there's only so much as a city that we have control over. But I think that being able to blend, like your slide said, the character of our city and, and kind of how we still have those very much, we still have a little bit of a farming community and blending those, you know, smaller lots and, and more dense housing. I think that, that's an issue that we run into often. So I'm, I'm grateful for your presentation and thank you, and I look forward to you coming back and talking to us as well.
Absolutely. And just to, to point that out, with five forty, I mean, we can take those lots. And if you want to, you know, we want to kind of create, you know, the, like I said, the starter-type homes instead of having even multifamily. I think that'll be another opportunity. Again, developers now will be able to have that money that is going, that will be coming through the general account to be able to move forward. And then also, the Housing Division is also including fifty million dollars in bonds to be able to move forward with some, with a lot of these projects. So I think there's ways for us to, to move around and kind of meet in the middle as far as how we would like to or how you would like to see growth within the city. But again, I think it's just awareness and it's education. And again, the Coalition is here to support you guys in any way and in fashion that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Look forward to seeing you come back.
Absolutely. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. All right. So before we move on to line item six, I see Battalion Chief Snyder is here. Mr. Snyder, would you like to give a, a Northland Fire update?
Good evening. So I apologize. I don't have the report in front of me. A pretty busy day, as it is every day. The year-to-date, we're averaging about fourteen nine-one-ones a day. This last month, we've had about an average of eleven. So pretty busy. And as you guys know, the interstate daily gets shut down in the mornings, evenings, kind of afternoons, which prolongs our transport times, which minimizes the amount of time our paramedics are in the city. Last two days, we've had zero paramedics on for the last forty-eight hours, and we won't have paramedics on tomorrow due to staffing. So we're utilizing all our mutual aid partners from the city of Reno, Pyramid Lake, out of Nixon, Silver Spring, Stagecoach. That's why I was late to the meeting. I was just doing CPR on somebody by myself for twenty-five minutes with a couple deputies. So that's kind of the position we're in. It's just real busy, under, understaffed. It's challenging. On a positive note, we're doing a turkey drive. So we're, we're buying turkeys, taking donated turkeys, and then giving those to the needy families. And we're currently recruiting and recruitment process for a couple firefighter, paramedics. So we just interviewed, I think, three or four. We have one vacancy that we'll be filling to date.
I, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On the turkey donations, do we just take them down the firehouse and drop them off?
Yes, sir. And then we'll be advertising those on the social media outlets on what that process looks like. But yeah, long story short, you can donate them to the fire station, stick them in the freezers and get them where they need to be. I apologize. I didn't have more for you tonight. I've, I just got here.
I'm glad you showed up to give the report that you did. I, I have a question for you. So I had a meeting with the, the chief the other day. In fact, a lot of our department heads. And Chief Dunn was talking about the non-emergency. I, I guess you'd say non-life-threatening transports that you have to do. Even if the, if the freeway is closed down, do you still call care flight in for those to transport them or?
Try not to, for the non-life-threatening. If it's, it's kind of gray area, they're going to get a helicopter just because we don't know, we're not doctors, so we'll fly them. But generally, if it's not life-threatening, if it's a low-acuity thing, we'll, we'll typically try to get them to Reno by ground, which is eating up a lot of time. So two of our ambulances are sitting in traffic right now.
All right, Councilwoman Zabrowski?
Thank you for being here. I look different as a battalion chief.
I appreciate it.
I'm just curious, with us having no paramedics here, how, how often do you think, per day, are we calling and asking for outside help because we don't actually have people?
So without the, the data in front of me, I would say it's probably between three and six times a day that we're asking outside communities to, to travel in, to cover our stuff. So and now we're, we're utilizing a helicopter daily, really, because of just distance, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Seeing none? Oh, wait. Yep, seeing none. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll take a five-minute break.
...
Realistic, and it it's not very efficient for employees to have to do that daily. Um and so um with the proposal, we have put together um replacing um All the switches at not just the this building, but at the water treatment plant, the waste treatment plant, and then also, I think, at the maintenance yard. So and then we are working with Uh internet providers to provide um a point-to-point, which is separate from this proposal, but this is part of the solution, what I've talked to Barry about uh or Mr. Williams, uh is to get internet to those facilities, so they can actually be able to get work done, get the reporting done, so they don't have to come back to this facility to get the reports done. Um so we're trying to build um a redundant and uh business continuity for the city. So if there is a piece of equipment that crashes or breaks or fails, that we have a Uh a secondary piece of equipment that's already configured and ready to go, all we do is just flip a switch, and it goes over to that new switch, so we can repair the 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 primary. Um we have core switches here, so each IDF. Uh when you look at uh this building, there's three IDF. You have the north, center, and uh south. All downstairs is uh the center one, and the one On the south is there. Those are all getting replaced. So we're going in there and replacing all of that. The network room is going to get an overhaul, so we're ripping everything out, replacing everything in there, re-cabling everything that's in there to make it uh easier to troubleshoot. Uh I don't know if you guys have ever seen that room, but it is not pretty. Uh looks like a bunch of spaghetti, and so if you try to troubleshoot one wire, it's going to take you a couple hours trying to figure out where it goes. So We're trying to eliminate that and mitigate that as much as possible. So if we have a problem, we can uh everything will be labeled, so we know where it's going, which panel it's at on the wall, and we can troubleshoot it quickly. And that's also part of that. This project is getting the full infrastructure up to um standard, and then also making it to uh allowing it to follow the the NIST two point O, which is uh governed by the by the government. Um so that's another portion of that, and then trying to keep the cost down, so we don't have to worry about emergency repairs. Uh also, in the proposal, we have um Uh UPSs, so uh uninterrupted uh power supply. So when the fire was out, it happened over here, and it shut down all the power. It literally shut down everything, and I think you know, I think John said he only had like ten minutes, if that, five minutes to turn everything off without it possibly destroying or hurting the hard hard drives in the servers. Um so I have built uh something with John in mind that we, I think it's about an hour, hour and a half, that we have runtime for the network. Uh moving everything from hardware, and now we're moving everything into uh cloud-based, so it's easier to manage, and it's uh less uh it less expensive on replacing hardware all the time. The only hardware we're going to be replacing every three to five years would be the um desktops. Um and then APs, depending on how quickly the technologies, because right now, we're we're in Wi-Fi seven, and I think you guys are on the Wi-Fi five or Two or something like that. It's not it's not very fast. It's been causing a lot of issues. Um you can't travel from one side of the building to the other without it losing connectivity. So if you're on a Wi-Fi call, if you're on a meeting, and you're trying to get to another office, it literally will drop you before you can get to the other side. So uh not not very productive. Um daily, again, daily operations, making sure that each employee is wanting to come to work. They feel empowered that they want to come to work and be able to get their job done. They can't do that if They have to wait half the day to get to half the stuff done that they need to get done. So um So again, our MSP uh contract that we had, our agreement that we put together was based around replacing all the equipment. Um very imperative, because it's it's not, we'd have to redo the whole contract again for what you guys currently have, and it would not be cost effective. Um it would be way too many hours, and it would be just, it'd be almost double, three times as expensive. Um once we get the new equipment in, then um we will start planning it with John and the staff to make sure that there's no downtime, and if there is, it's very minimal. And that's why we have this built. Um all the equipment will have warranties, so uh if anything happens to them, we can have them replaced quickly, and uh we use our our vendors. Everything was Um set up on a uh deal reg through the government or a government setup, so you guys get the best pricing versus us doing it as a uh a regular business. So you guys, We went and I, every piece of equipment, I went and made sure I talked to every uh manufacturer to make sure that we got the best pricing for you guys. Besides that, uh and then recommended steps is just getting your guys' buy-in. I think you guys all heard the pain points of all the employees complaining about the network just being really old. And so what we're going to put in together in this too is we're going to put a lifecycle management program to where we have tracked every piece of equipment that is in here, as far as uh every computer, every server, every switch, every AP, Every firewall, uh point-to-point, whatever it is, we'll have a full um analysis of everything that's been put in, when it was put in, and then when it, when its uh end of life is going to be, so we can prepare Uh the council and the city to know when the next uh, I guess, hardware refresh is going to happen, to make it um. So then, as far as the cost, it would be much easier to dictate versus Coming up with something like this after fifteen years and not replacing equipment. So um and then mostly just making sure that the the infrastructure is stable. Secure is our biggest uh standpoint. I think we talked about that, me and Joe, uh last time I presented, is the security portion of that. Um is is we're going to have uh two different firewalls. One's uh going to be the main firewall. Secondary will be uh for high availability. So if the firewall ever, for whatever reason, you guys have a power outage and it dies, Uh the city will still be secure with the secondary firewall. It automatically switches over. And that's the same thing. We're working on getting uh faster internet here and then a backup internet connectivity too. So we're we're trying to get you guys up to, it's in your motto, building the future. So we just need to make sure that you guys are able to build a future. If The infrastructure's not there, we can't build a future. So we want to make sure that we can get you guys there. Any questions?
I I just want to uh make a comment that I know that I don't know how many times staff is in the middle of doing something, a project, and they're kicked out. And then they have to go back in, and they get start all over again. And it's pretty frustrating for staff when when this happens all the time. Um I was just in Mr. Williams' office the other day, and we're trying to bring something up, and it just like took forever. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing these, seeing this done.
Yeah, I'm sorry, good. No, I was on another note, too, is uh we're looking at moving um when I said going into the cloud. So when they're working on projects, once we get everything into the cloud, if they're working on a project, it's auto-saved. So if it does crash, they can pull it back up, and it saves it right where they left off. Um and then also collaboration with the cloud is um if you have two different uh same people in the same department working on one document, they can work on it at the same time. Now they can't do that. Someone has to finish the document, save it. They have to go and find it, open it, then do their edits, and then it's just very time-consuming. Um so we're trying to make sure that we can streamline this, so that that staff can get their job done quickly, and they can be more efficient in what they do. So happy happy employees is a happy city. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh good evening, sir. Um thank you for the presentation. I have one um Comment, and then I have two questions. My first comment is on this uh bid. Uh there's a estimated tax, and I think I spoke with uh Ms. Altek um about removing that item, because the city doesn't. We're the only people in this room that don't pay tax.
Correct. Yeah. So we actually um I went back and looked at the exemption, and we we did remove all that.
Okay, good. We can move on to the next thing. So uh two of my concerns that are not addressed in this proposal, and I'm hoping that you can either give pointers in the right direction, Or in the second half of this, in next year's budget, you can propose to resolve this issue. Um the two things that I would like to see is a fire suppression system that doesn't flood that room with water. Uh so we're using a system like uh One of these uh chemical systems, where we're able to stop a fire without destroying everything in the room. And um this, and I think that's a big one, and I don't, I haven't, I've been in the room a couple times. Uh invited and uninvited. Uh I peeked in there. Um but I want to know, uh I think we'll we'll find out if there's sprinklers in there, and I'd like to know how we mitigate that to do something that's not water-based. Uh my second concern is access control. And so currently, we have um I won't, I won't say what the what access control we have in place, but I would like a system by which there's not a key, That there is a badge, so we can tell who's going into that that room and who's coming out of that room, what times of the day is a night, because all of our, it's the the centralized brain of everything we're doing. And in today's day and age, we need to be able to track who's in there, who's supposed to be in there, who's not in there, uh and why. So uh we need to backtrack and look at these things when things happen. So Those are the uh three things. Sales tax, you covered that. Fire suppression and access control. So.
Yeah. So with the fire suppression, uh with us removing majority of that equipment, the only equipment that would be in there would be Uh firewalls, a couple of switches, and possibly the internet, so there won't be as much heat in there or possible fire. Um we'd have to redesign that whole room if we're going to put suppression there. We'd have to make sure it's all sealed off, um which it's not. And then um Yeah, there's that's, yeah, we we can definitely look into that for you guys, um and then figure out what's cost-effective and what's what's going to work. Um Yes.
If you would, please come come up to the microphone and Say who you are, although I know who you are.
Impromptu interruption. Michael Bya, CEO with PAC States. Again, thank you for allowing us to come here and present. But we have contacts in that space for the fire suppression. And we can bring some engineers and help collaborate and.
Okay. I think we just need, I think it would be a good idea to look at it, to see what we have, what we, how we can improve it. I mean, it's like if if the sprinkler went off in that room, I mean, we're we're right back to, we're worse than Windows ten, right? Uh we're we're the phones, everything we we have here is goes through that uh those systems. So um it's the vital piece that keeps this whole place together, the glue that keeps us together. So.
And I believe we're working with uh somebody on access control now. I think we just upgraded the surveillance uh Water treatment. And the next phase of that was to look at uh and and it fully integrated, our our, the solution we provided there has a single pane, fully integrated access control.
Yeah. I have to badge out to use the bathroom, but I don't have to badge out to go into the into the room. So I thought that was kind of peculiar. So uh anyway, thank you for that. Love your hat, by the way. Like the mayor has one that matches.
And then also to touch base on the the um access control, um the cameras and the access control work together. We also have um with that same camera vendor, they it's called um They they have a software that would work for ActiveShooter. So if you have someone that comes in into this building and for some reason has a firearm on them, that's not an officer. And if they pull, would they pull it out, it will detect and will alert whoever you guys have is um The police officer or um whoever it needs to be, they will notify them immediately, and then they'll live-track that person on the camera, so they know, the police officers will know exactly where he's at at all time. Um and then also working with um the safety acronyms, um making sure that we're all under the same um guidelines as far as Are we on lockdown? Um are we in a safe zone? Are we allowed to allow the children? That's at the schools, but that also could uh be here too. So the staff knows what's going on with the police department, so they're all coincide with each other. So we we have a system that we can talk more about, that would actually be able to Talk more on your point, not only lock it down, but also be able to provide more s- more security and more safety for the employees.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Welcome. Answer your questions?
Councilman Torres and then Councilman Lau. Councilman Torres, light came on.
Let him go.
Go ahead, Councilman Lau.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, so we we have comment, we have comment and questions first. So thank you, Councilman Torres.
Uh can we also work on, and I know this is probably a staff thing, uh with the implementation and the um upgrade in our entire IT infrastructure? Work on a cybersecurity um policy, because we do not have that right now. I mean, I totally agree. We don't want any councilman inside there, um especially by themselves, whether they have a badge or not. There's really no reason for us to be in there. Um but other than that, we we need to work on our cybersecurity um policy.
Yeah. So we'll put together a full cybersecurity policy and uh policies and procedures. We'll work with um whoever the city manager is, if it's not, it would be Lydia and um The mayor to kind of figure out what, and John, of course, to figure out what's the best that's suited for the city, and then we'll put that together, and then we just got to have you guys implement it. So you're welcome.
Councilman Lau, you said you wanted to make a motion, but we have Councilwoman Zaberski.
Hi. I just want to make sure when we're making the motion that we have the right amount of money. So um because the motion has a dollar amount, can we calculate what it is minus the tax, so we have the right number? Um or can we make a motion that the number is revised, and we're only approving the first half? I just want to make sure before, I know Councilman Lau uh wants to make a motion, but the current amount is five seventy-seven, Uh five hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents, and there was about twenty-five thousand and change in uh sales tax. So that number needs to be updated before his motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Zaberski?
I'll wait till he comes back.
What's that?
I'll wait till he gets back up.
Oh.
I think it would be proper to have the proper number unless. Okay, so um the number that I've been given is uh five hundred and fifty-one dollar, uh five hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and five cents, and I'll hand this down to Councilman Lau, so he has the right number for his motion.
Councilwoman Zaberski, go ahead.
Uh I think I might have a similar question. Um I was just hoping for more of a Kind of, kind of a breakdown, just because when I went through, hang on, let me get back to, let me get back to it now. Sorry. It's a long contract.
No worries.
For six, for six months, it's a, it's hefty. Um on on one of the pages here, it has kind of a breakdown of of everything that that we need, Which might as well be in a different language for me, because it's like core processors and um All of that kind of stuff. And so I guess I I'm kind of curious, are are we, were we able to save like any of our existing IT infrastructure? None of it? we're the only people in this room that don't pay tax.
Correct. Yeah. So we actually, I went back and looked at the exemption and we did remove all that.
Okay, good. We can move on to the next thing. So two of my concerns that are not addressed in this proposal, and I'm hoping that you can either give pointers in the right direction or in the second half of this and next year's budget, you can propose to resolve this issue. The two things that I would like to see is a fire suppression system that doesn't flood that room with water. So we're using a system like one of these chemical systems where we're able to stop a fire without destroying everything in the room. And this, and I think that's a big one. And I don't, I haven't, I've been in the room a couple of times, invited and uninvited. I peeked in there. But I want to know, I think we'll, we'll find out if there's sprinklers in there. And I like to know how we mitigate that to do something that's not water based. My second concern is access control. And so currently we have, I won't, I won't say what what access control we have in place. But I would like a system by which there's not a key, that there is a badge, so that we can tell who's going into that that room and who's coming out of that room, what times of the day is a night. Because all of our, it's the decentralized brain of everything we're doing. And in today's day and age, we need to be able to track who's in there, who's supposed to be in there, who's not in there and why. So we need to backtrack and look at these things when things happen. So those are the three things. Sales tax, you covered that, fire suppression and access control. So.
Yeah. So with the fire suppression, with us removing majority of that equipment, the only equipment that would be in there would be firewalls, a couple of switches and possibly the internet. So there won't be as much heat in there or possible fire. We'd have to redesign that whole room if we're going to put suppression there. We'd have to make sure it's all sealed off, which it's not. And then there's that's, yeah, we, we can definitely look into that for you guys and then figure out what's cost effective and what's what's going to work. Yes.
If you would, please come, come up to the microphone and say who you are, although I know who you are.
Impromptu interruption, Michael Byas, CEO with PAC States. Again, thank you for allowing us to come here and present. We have contacts in that space for the fire suppression.
Okay.
And we can bring some engineers and help collaborate and.
Okay. I think we just need, I think it'd be a good idea to look at it to see what we have, what we, how we can improve it. I mean, it's like if the sprinkler went off in that room, I mean, we're right back to, we're worse than Windows 10, right? Where the phones, everything we have here is goes through that, those systems. So it's the vital piece that keeps this whole place together, the glue that keeps us together. So.
And I believe we're working with somebody on access control now. I think we just upgraded the surveillance water treatment.
Yeah.
And the next phase of that was to look at, and it fully integrated, our, the solution we provided there has a single pane, fully integrated access control.
Yeah. I have to badge out to use the bathroom, but I don't have the badge out to go into the into the room. So I thought that was kind of peculiar. So anyway, thank you for that. Love your hat, by the way. Like the mayor has one that matches.
And then also to touch base on the the access control, the cameras and the access control work together. We also have with that same camera vendor, they, it's called they have a software that would work for active shooter. So if you have someone that comes in into this building for some reason has a firearm on them, that's not an officer. And if they pull, if they pull it out, it will detect and will alert whoever you guys have is the police officer or whoever it needs to be, they will notify them immediately. And then they'll live track that person on the camera. So they know, the police officers will know exactly where he's at at all time. And then also working with the safety acronyms, making sure that we're all under the same guidelines as far as are we on lockdown? Are we in a safe zone? Are we allowed to allow the children? That's at the schools, but that also could be here too. So the staff knows what's going on with the police department. So they're all coincide with each other. So we have a system that we can talk more about that would actually be able to talk more on your point, not only lock it down, but also be able to provide more, more security and more safety for the employees.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Answer your questions.
Councilman Torres and then Councilman Lau. Councilman Torres, light came on.
Let him go.
Well, I'm just ready to make. Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm ready to make a motion. That's all I'm, is up to.
Okay, so we have comment, we have comment and questions first. So thank you. Councilman Torres.
Can we also work on, and I know this is probably a staff thing, with the implementation and the upgrade in our entire IT infrastructure work on cybersecurity policy? Because we do not have that right now. I mean, I totally agree. We don't want any councilmen inside there, especially by themselves, whether they have a badge or not. There's really no reason for us to be in there. But other than that, we need to work on our cybersecurity policy.
Yeah. So we'll put together a full cybersecurity policy and policies and procedures. We'll work with whoever the city manager is, if it's not, it would be Lydia and the mayor to kind of figure out what, and John, of course, to figure out what's the best that's suited for the city. And then we'll put that together and then we just got to have you guys implement it.
Thank you, sir.
So you're welcome.
Councilman Lau, you said you wanted to make a motion, but we have Councilwoman Zaberski.
I just want to make sure when we're making the motion that we have the right amount of money. So because the motion has a dollar amount, can we calculate what it is minus the tax? So we have the right number? Or can we make a motion that the number is revised and we're only approving the first half? I just want to make sure before, I know Councilman Lau wants to make a motion, but the current amount is 577, 577,554.13, and there was about 25,000 and change in sales tax. So that number needs to be updated before his motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Zaberski?
I'll wait till he comes back.
What's that?
I'll wait till he gets back up.
Oh.
I think it would be proper to have the proper number unless. Okay, so the number that I've been given is 551, 551,660.05. And I'll hand this down to Councilman Lau so he has the right number for his motion.
Councilwoman Zaberski, go ahead.
I think I might have a similar question. I was just hoping for more of a kind of, kind of a breakdown, just because when I went through, hang on, let me get back to, let me get back to it now. Sorry. It's a long contract.
No worries.
For six, for six months, it's, it's hefty. On, on one of the pages here, it has kind of a breakdown of of everything that that we need, which might as well be in a different language for me because it's like core processors and all of that kind of stuff. And so I guess I'm kind of curious, are we, were we able to save like any of our existing IT infrastructure? None of it?
There's, so just so you know, so the, the contract was built off of the MSP RFP that was sent out. So total amount of computers and everything. So we built it off of that. Speaking with John, so this contract will change due to some equipment he already implemented. So he already purchased some devices, but we didn't get that update in the RFP. So I built it off of what he built. So this will change. And that's why the deposit comes up first, and then at the end of it, it will change. So if we don't use, say, $30,000, you guys are not, the city is not being billed for $30,000. It will go down. So we're not, we're not billing you for the full amount. We're billing you for half of it. And then whatever we use or what we change will be within that dollar amount. If it completely changes and say it's only 500,000, then that's all we're charging you, the difference. So it won't be the 250, it'll be only 200,000. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we're, so when we do a full analysis, when we go through with John and walk the property one more time, because again, we did that assessment a year ago. And so we built it off the RFP that John gave us the information. So it could be less or more than what he has. I doubt it's going to be more. It's more likely it's going to be less than the hardware count. So like computers, I think he installed maybe like five or six. But for me, I'd rather have five or six in there. So we have spares in the back. So if something happens, does that make sense? So and so if it's not going to be too big of a difference in the, the quality count, then yeah, but no, there's a lot of equipment that all, majority of it needs to be replaced. 95% needs to be replaced. And that 5% is only what he put in maybe like a couple of months ago.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
It does. And then I was, I was just trying to kind of find the breakdown for each one of the monitors and everything like that. So I'm sure that we'll get that, you know, towards the end as we, as, as we get the final, final bill.
Yeah, like I said, that it was just a ballpark number because of what John had given us in or in the RFP. And so like I said, this, those numbers will change. Certain people want a 34 inch curved big screen. They're not going to want dual screens. So that, like I said, those numbers will definitely change. We just don't know until we actually start talking to each employee and figure out what policy they want as far as how many screens they can have. Do they want three, four, 10? Like it all depends. So it, like I said, it's all going to be adjusted. That's just like, that's the highest mark that's going to be at is that dollar amount. It's more likely going to be a lot less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Lau?
I move to enter into a contract with PAC States for for IT enterprise infrastructure, modernization and cloud identity migration plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to just make one comment on this item before we adjourn. If that's okay.
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. In regards to the comment about councilmen aren't allowed or shouldn't be in the room, I just, just want to go on the record that I went took a senior staff member who's pretty high up in the city, expressed some concerns and then illustrated my ability to get into that room. And so that was the preface, it wasn't alone or unsupervised. And I felt the comment was a little derogatory. So I just wanted to clarify that, sir.
Councilwoman Zaberski?
Probably a question for John and also Rob, Robert, Mr. Carson.
John, John's on vacation, so it'll have to go.
It's okay. So with, with the fact that we're having to get rid of a lot of our older stuff, it's still very working stuff. So will we be able to use that like as an asset to sell? Does John, or do you have the connections that will be able to offload all of those old monitors? Old things like that? Do cities do that? Or do they get destroyed because they have too much stuff on them? They get destroyed?
Yeah. So I, we've been working with you guys for a long time and your basement was full of stuff that you guys collected for years and years and years and years and years and years. And yeah.
Dang.
So.
There's no way to wipe those clean so that we can sell them?
So what I, what I, what I've suggested in the past is any of the older equipment that can still possibly work for like a Chrome OS is we can wipe them and then donate them to
Schools?
Schools. We can donate them to, I, I was thinking about talking to you guys about building a like a, like a community center for the kids that can be able to do their schoolwork that don't have internet at home that can come here and actually have a safe place to do their schoolwork. So that's where we've used the old equipment that you guys would have.
Fun fact, we have a brand new community resource center. So yeah. If there, if there's a way that, that we can get information on how to do that, or if you have connections as far as wiping things, I think it'd be a good idea to kind of take inventory of all of the old stuff that we have down in the basement and the stuff that we're getting rid of as well, so that we can offload some of it.
Yeah, John finally got it all taken care of. We had truckloads of stuff to come out and get rid of the old printers and stuff. So that's all gone. But yeah, we don't want to start that over again. So we want to make sure, anything that's, that's still usable. We would go ahead and talk to Mr. Carson and John and figure out how we could recycle that appropriately.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, get started. We'll move on to line item seven, pub forum, this portion of the meeting voted public. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at this meeting. Raise your hand, feature Zoom, start on participating phone via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. Is there any public input at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom? Nobody on the phone? Okay, thank you. Our next meeting will be